Roll call shows 35 ayes, zero nays, zero absent and excused. The motion has passed and the attachees have been elected to the Senate.
Madam President.
Senator Anthon.
Thank you, Madam President. I ask unanimous consent that our Senate Sergeant at Arms, Sarah Jane McDonald, now escort those attachees to the Senate chamber to receive their oath of office.
Without objection, it is so ordered. Will you all please raise your right hand? And do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Idaho and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office according to your ability?
Madam President.
Senator Anthon.
I ask unanimous consent that the Senate return to the Ninth Order of Business.
Without objection, the Senate will now return to the Ninth Order of Business. Messages from the House.
Madam President.
Senator Anthon.
Thank you, Madam President. I ask unanimous consent that the Senate go at ease.
Without objection, the Senate will go at ease.[105.64][105.64](CROSSTALK) Senators, just before we go permanently at ease, so to speak, we want
to provide an opportunity for any other introductions or announcements before we leave the floor.
Madam President.
Senator Harris.
Madam President, members of the majority, tentatively plan for a caucus meeting later. We'll see what the House does or the body across the rotunda. And if we have a caucus meeting, we'll get ahold of you and let you know. Thank you.
Madam President, for the introduction.
Senator Lakey.
Thank you, Madam President. Senators, I'd like you to join me in welcoming Steve Almer. He's a constituent and a fellow Canyon County resident. Please welcome him to the Senate.[151.69][151.69](APPLAUSE).
Madam President.
Rice.
Madam President, for the members of the local government tax committee, we don't know exactly what time that joint meeting will be. We anticipate somewhere around 9:30 or 10:00. But stay close and pay attention so that we can make sure all of us are there. That'll be our opportunity to hear the presentation of the bill and public comment. And so we want to make sure we're there for it. Thank you, Madam President.
Madam President, for announcement.
Senator Ward Engelking.
The minority caucus is planning to meet about 9 o'clock, so stay close and join us at 9:00.
Madam President.
Senator Stenit.
Thank you, Madam President, for an observation, if I might.
Senator has the floor.
I wanted to welcome Senator Nye. I know that we all have lost a dear friend and just know what it looks like to have somebody, a spouse, take over. And so I just want to make sure that she knows that she's most welcome.
Madam President.
Senator Winder.
If I might, just make a couple of remarks. Also want to welcome Senator Nye. Had the privilege of swearing her in earlier in the summer. It worked out that I was in the Sun Valley Ketchum area at a speaking engagement and we were able to meet at that time and swear her in. And I can assure you, she's a very delightful woman. She'll be excellent in taking over for Mark. And we just want to express our sincere condolences on behalf of the Senate. And I believe that his memorial service is coming up soon, so we probably need to figure out exactly when that is and where, so we could make that announcement today at some point, so people are aware of that. But I believe it's the 17th, but I don't know the exact time or location. So if people will let me know, we'll make that announcement. Also want to welcome Brian Merrill. Brian's been a good friend for many, many years, has worked in the party. It's going to be an excellent fill-in for Senator Din Hartog, who regrets not being able to be here, but they have, I believe, a family wedding that's occurring at this time and a trip. Also, like to welcome back former Senator and now Senator again, Becky Funk. And thank you for being willing to fill in for Senator Souza, who also has a house full of people for a wedding. And so we don't get to check with each one of you when dates are set. And for those that had inconvenience, we're sorry for that, but we're kind of at the mercy of the executive branch when they want to call things. So in my opinion, that's why we do need the constitutional amendment to pass, so that we can at times be able to call ourselves back into session and deal with some of the things we would.
You're also aware of heavy inflation. You are families who are struggling with the price of groceries, the price of new vehicles, the price of used vehicles, and everything in between. There's a congressional study that shows that the average family is paying $600 a month more because of rising costs. We see an inflation rate in Idaho of 8.5%. You know, how does one deal with that? Obviously, inflation generates taxes, right? Good news, right? Generates taxes. We don't want to be in a position of taking advantage of that. This bill does four things. First is a rebate. This portion, the income tax portion, are modeled after a House Bill 436 of this very year. The House, the bill you saw this year, which is also modeled after the previous bill of the prior year, that also provided tax relief. In this rebate section, we're looking at half a billion dollars out of the existing funds, cash on hand, go back to taxpayers. That's just a phenomenal amount. When you couple that with the rebate we had already this year, this year, it's $850 million, almost a billion dollars going back as rebates to taxpayers. The rebate is a minimum of $600 for a joint father, $300 for individual, or 10% of 2020 tax returns. The second piece of this is, and just so you know, this is going to happen this year. The system's coded from our previous efforts in March. Just push the button and get those checks back out. Ongoing tax relief. Again, in the past couple of years, we've gone from seven brackets to five brackets to four brackets to one bracket in this bill, flat tax. To me, that's phenomenal, phenomenal. I can't say enough good things about a flat tax. Every dollar you earn isn't being punished as you earn more. It encourages growth and encourages responsibility at all levels of taxpaying. Folks are paying their fair share, but their fair share. And not some agrees this way. So the first $2,500 at the base is at zero, and then it jumps to the 5.8. We've gone from 6.925 to 6.5 to 6 to 5.8 in two years. That's phenomenal. And still have the revenue C. You might argue that's why we have the revenue C. Clearly, we've had the largest tax reduction in Idaho's history in these last three years. The RS also provides $330 million to be transferred to the Public School Income Fund. No other policy is discussed, nothing else happens, sets aside your marks, it doesn't spend it, doesn't appropriate it. Those processes still happen as normal. There's a new fund for in-demand careers of $80 million. That's also in the fund. That's what it does. I'd be happy to stand up for any questions you might have.
Representative Weber.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to introduce RS 29902C1 for print.
Thank you, Representative Weber. Motion's always in order. Do we have a discussion on the motion?
Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, I'm just making sure there's no lights on. Representative?
Mr. Chairman, one question. Representative Harris, please forgive me for being the new guy here, but as I read through this, are we violating Article III, Section 16 of the Idaho State Constitution and combining, you know, multiple ways of how we go about this bill?
Thank you.
Multiple subjects.
Chairman Harris.
Yeah, thanks for the question. I do want to address that frankly, to clear that up. First of all, we can't answer that. There's no motion addresses that. There's no, that would be addressed, obviously, in a court, who says, someone brings the passed bill to the court and says, "This violates the Constitution, Section 16 of Article III." And the court would go through that process and say, "Yes, you did. No, we didn't." So at this point, we can have opinions, and my opinion is that it is not. We also have an AG opinion that was requested by one of our colleagues in the Senate, in the Democratic Caucus. And the AG opinion also was that it is not. A clear reading of that section also says that there must be unity between the title and the title and the subject. That's the issue. And so at some point, when this is introduced and a title is produced as part of the bill, you can look and see, does a title, is a title unified with the subject? And that'd be the challengeable issue. And in the RS introduction hearing, it'd be impossible to address. We don't have a title yet.
Thank you, Chairman. With no more questions, there's a motion to introduce RS 29902C1. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The motion carries. I'll wait for the good chairman to come up. With that, I thank you, everyone, for attending, and with that, we'll be adjourned.
Idaho in Session is brought to you by Union Pacific Foundation, Boise State University School of Public Service, Idaho State Broadcasters Association, Idaho Cable Broadband Association, Association of Idaho Cities, University of Idaho James A. and Louise McClure Center for Public Policy Research. Additional funding provided by the Friends of Idaho Public Television Endowment. The Friends of Idaho Public Television Endowment. Idaho In Session is brought to you by: Union Pacific Foundation, Boise State University School of Public Service, Idaho State Broadcasters Association, Idaho Cable Broadband Association, Association of Idaho Cities, University of Idaho James A. and Louise McClure Center for Public Policy Research. Additional funding provided by: The Friends of Idaho Public Television Endowment.
Idaho in Session is brought to you by Union Pacific Foundation, Boise State University School of Public Service, Idaho State Broadcasters Association, Idaho Cable Broadband Association, Association of Idaho Cities, University of Idaho James A. and Louise McClure Center for Public Policy Research. Additional funding provided by the Friends of Idaho Public Television Endowment. Idaho in Session is brought to you by Union Pacific Foundation, Boise State University School of Public Service, Idaho State Broadcasters Association, Idaho Cable Broadband Association, Association of Idaho Cities, University of Idaho James A. and Louise McClure Center for Public Policy Research. Additional funding provided by the Friends of Idaho Public Television Endowment. Idaho in Session is brought to you by Union Pacific Foundation, Boise State University School of Public Service, Idaho State Broadcasters Association, Idaho Cable Broadband Association, Association of Idaho Cities, University of Idaho James A. and Louise McClure Center for Public Policy Research. Additional funding provided by the Friends of Idaho Public Television Endowment.
I think we're ready to go. You ready? The House will be in order. Prior to going at ease, the House was in the Seventh Order of Business and will advance to the Eighth Order of Business: Introduction, First Reading, and Reference of Bills and Joint Resolutions. The House is in the Eighth Order.
In the House of Representatives, House Bill 1 by Revenue and Taxation Committee: An Act Relating to Taxation and the Distribution of Certain Tax Monies, Providing Legislative Findings and Intent, Amending Section 6330-24B Idaho Code to revise provisions regarding the Idaho Tax Rebate Fund, Providing for a Cash Transfer, Repealing Section 6330-24 Idaho Code relating to the individual's tax and tax on estates and trusts; Amending Chapter 30 Title 63 Idaho Code by the addition of a new section, 6330-24 Idaho Code, to establish provisions regarding the individual's tax and tax on estates and trusts; repealing Section 6330-25 Idaho Code relating to the tax on corporate income; amending Chapter 30 Title 63 Idaho Code by the addition of a new section, 6330-25 Idaho Code, to establish provisions regarding the tax on corporate income; repealing Section 6330-67 Idaho Code relating to revenue received and the state refund account; amending Chapter 30 Title 63 Idaho Code by the addition of a new section, 6330-67 Idaho Code, to establish provisions regarding revenue received and the state refund account; amending Section 6330-15 Idaho Code to revise terminology; amending Section 6330-36B Idaho Code to revise a provision regarding backup withholding by pass-through entities; amending Section 6336-38 Idaho Code to revise provisions regarding the distribution of sales and use tax revenue; amending Chapter 43 Title 33 Idaho Code by the addition of a new section, 3343-05 Idaho Code, to provide for the in-demand careers fund, providing for an advisory question to be placed on the ballot before the voters and declaring an emergency and providing effective dates.
House Bill Number 1 will be referred to the Judiciary Rules and Administration Committee for Printing. Without objection, the House will now return to the Fifth Order of Business: Report of Standing Committees. The House is at the Fifth Order.
In the House of Representatives, Mr. Speaker, we are Committee on Judiciary Rules and Administration: Report that we have printed, House Bill 1, Cheney Chairman.
Without objection, House Bill Number 1 will be referred to the Revenue and Taxation Committee. Without objection, the House will now advance to the Seventh Order of Business: motions, memorials, and resolutions. The House is at the Seventh Order. Gentleman from 14.
Mr. Speaker, point of personal privilege.
Have the floor.
Mr. Speaker, members of the House, before we go at ease, we'll go at ease and go downstairs and have a hearing on the bill. I would like to welcome our new chief clerk, though, Erica. So all of you should give her a hard time today because I'm sure she's as nervous as the rest of us, but she's doing a fine job and we welcome you as our new chief clerk and thank you for doing what you're doing. With that...
Gentleman from 24.
Welcome Erica McGinnis. As you know, she was the House Education Chairman, or she ran the committee. Secretary to myself.
Freudian slips are still the order of the day. Go ahead.
And she will read bills much better than I can explain things. But anyway, and I just appreciate all the things she's done for the House while she was a secretary to our committee and also she was Commerce and Human Resources. And let's see, I think she was also Local Government Secretary. And I just was excited to hear that she was going to put her name in for this. Anyway, congratulations to you.
Gentleman from 22.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Point of personal privilege.
Have the floor.
I would like to remind the body of Rule Number 19.
I was just looking for that.
Clerk is not to be annoyed.
You can give her a hard time, but don't cross the line into annoyance. Otherwise, it violates your rule. The House is at the Seventh Order and we will go at ease here. Actually, we probably should recess. This is open-ended, I think, is what... Gentleman from 14, do you have an announcement before you make a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Speaker, I was going to move that we recess until the hour of 1:00 p.m., knowing that we would probably be later depending on the hearing. My concern, though, is if the hearing goes faster than that, that we are then waiting around for time to get here, knowing what we need to do today. So my preference would be, Mr. Speaker, that we do like we did before, subject to call the chair, so it's fluid and we can call everybody back sooner if we get done earlier.
Thank you. Lady from 23 for an announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Knowing that not everybody checks their emails like they should, we do have lunch coming. It's going to be for the House Majority Caucus. That'll be served up on the fourth floor lounge, so lunch will be available about noon for the majority.
Thank you. 18.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, for point of clarification of the good lady from 23.
Lady Yields.
Lady Yields.
Am I to understand that the minority may not partake in this lunch?
Mr. Speaker, good lady, unless the minority wants to donate to the Majority Caucus PAC, then no.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Gentleman from 14. Well, before we... Are there announcements from the clerk? Please read the announcement.
House Revenue and Taxation Committee will meet jointly with Senate Local Government and Taxation Thursday, September 1st upon recess of the House, Room WW02, Lincoln Auditorium, Harris Chairman.
Joint meeting, 9:30-ish. Gentleman from 14. Let's go subject call of chair.
Yeah, Mr. Speaker, I moved that the House do recess now, subject to call the chair.
You've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Those opposed? The House stands at recess, subject to call the chair early afternoon-ish.
Idaho in Session is brought to you by Union Pacific Foundation, Boise State University School of Public Service, Idaho State Broadcasters Association, Idaho Cable Broadband Association, Association of Idaho Cities, University of Idaho James A. and Louise McClure Center for Public Policy Research. Additional funding provided by the Friends of Idaho Public Television Endowment. The Friends of Idaho Public Television Endowment. Idaho in Session is brought to you by: Union Pacific Foundation, Boise State University School of Public Service, Idaho State Broadcasters Association, Idaho Cable Broadband Association, Association of Idaho Cities, University of Idaho James A. and Louise McClure Center for Public Policy Research. Additional funding provided by: The Friends of Idaho Public Television Endowment. Idaho in Session is brought to you by: Union Pacific Foundation, Boise State University School of Public Service, Idaho State Broadcasters Association, Idaho Cable Broadband Association, Association of Idaho Cities, University of Idaho James A. and Louise McClure Center for Public Policy Research. Additional funding provided by: The Friends of Idaho Public Television Endowment. Good morning, committee.
Welcome to the House Revenue and Taxation Committee. We're glad to have you here. We're also glad to have you here with us in the audience. There'll be a chance later on to participate, so we're looking forward to hearing from you. There was a sign up sheet that we've now pulled that we have with us. Thank you for your willingness to participate in this process. The Secretary will take us out at roll. Also, the Secretary of our parallel friends in the Senate Local Government and Taxation Committee. We've invited them here with us today as well. We've invited them to listen in, to ask questions as they feel they would like to. They'll obviously hold their own committee, meeting at the appropriate time.
Idaho in Session is brought to you by Union Pacific Foundation, Boise State University School of Public Service, Idaho State Broadcasters Association, Idaho Cable Broadband Association, Association of Idaho Cities, University of Idaho James A. and Louise McClure Center for Public Policy Research. Additional... Idaho in Session is brought to you by Union Pacific Foundation, Boise State University School of Public Service, Idaho State Broadcasters Association, Idaho Cable Broadband Association, Association of Idaho Cities, University of Idaho James A. and Louise McClure Center for Public Policy Research. Additional funding provided by the Friends of Idaho Public Television Endowment. Idaho in Session is brought to you by...
Good morning, committee. Welcome to the House of Representatives Taxation Committee. We're glad to have you here. We're also glad to have you here with us in the audience. There'll be a chance later on to participate, so we're looking forward to hearing from you. There was a sound sheet that we've now pulled that we have with us. Thank you for your willingness to participate in this process. The Secretary will take us out at roll. Also, the Secretary of our parallel friends in the Senate Local Government and Taxation Committee. We've invited them here with us today as well. We invite them to listen in, to ask questions as they feel they would like to. They'll obviously hold their own committee meeting at the appropriate time to process this bill. So be aware, those of you in the audience during our testimony, we allow two minutes for the testimony. Obviously, the bill at hand, House Bill 1, is the topic of those questions and of those testimonies. So keep it limited to the content of the House bill. Those are our rules. We appreciate you to follow those. And Senator Rice, do you want to take a couple of minutes?
Thank you, Chairman. We appreciate the House Committee inviting the Senate Committee to participate for the presentation of the bill sponsor and for the public comment and our ability to ask questions. We're trying to respect the time of the public as well as the legislature. It's not really prudent for people to have to come back and talk to the other committee the same day. And so, we appreciate it. Thank you very much. The Senate participation, though, is limited in this to just listening and asking any questions we have. We will not participate in any deliberations during this meeting and will be excused before the House Committee deliberates on the bill.
Thank you. You can see on the agenda that we have House Bill 1 before us. I am the floor sponsor. I'll be presenting that bill now. And I'll give a gavel to Vice Chair Addus, who will conduct the remainder of this portion of the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At your convenience, we'll proceed, and the floor will be yours.
Well, good morning, committees and committees. Pleased to be here. Good to see you all here. I'm Representative Steve Harris from District 21. Still exists for the moment. And I'm glad to present to you this morning House Bill 1. I think you've all had this RS and draft before you. Hopefully, you had a good chance to review it, to go through the pieces of it. There are several pieces of it. We'll walk through here somewhat as well. But I do invite you to ask questions and participate after my presentation, to answer any questions I can answer and to resolve any issues that you might think exists. So, House Bill 1, you have in your packet. There were no changes made to it in the RS process, so it looks the same as it does on the website. But I am here to present House Bill 1. There are four primary things that this bill does. The first is it provides a rebate. Maybe you remember earlier this year, we had House Bill 436 that provided both a tax rebate as well as an income tax bracket reduction and a reduction in the number of tax brackets. A great bill, passed, and the rebates have already gone out. You should have already received that return of your money that you paid in taxes. The idea here somewhat is that it's been, I guess, a great year for Idaho, maybe a great year for Idaho revenues in any case. But where does that money come from? It comes from our citizens. It comes from our taxpayers. So when there's a great deal of money sitting in those coffers, it seems appropriate, maybe even an emergency, to get that out, to get that back, maybe before we have a chance to spend it in a normal session. So I'm excited to see this. In fact, the rebate we're looking at here is a half a billion dollars in funds that we've collected to go back to the citizens. A half a billion dollars goes back to the Idaho economy. And the neat thing is, it happens this year. So we'll have two rebates this year on bills that pass this year. The system's ready to go. It had a good practice run earlier this mid-year. It's all set up, and we should be seeing checks flowing, I think, even in September. That's amazing. That's awesome. It means that this year, there has been $850 million, nearly a billion dollars going back to Idaho citizens, back into the economy, back into where it belongs, especially when you consider the inflation, 8.5%. They need that more than ever. Inflation actually impacts the Idaho coffers because inflation results in higher revenues, frankly. And so, this allows us to help combat the inflation the citizens are feeling as we return that money to them. And the higher amounts that they're paying on sales tax, for example, and in other areas. So that's exciting to me. The bill also provides some ongoing relief as we begin, for the third time, adjusted tax brackets. We've gone from a top tax rate of 6.925 in a couple of years, down to 6.5, down to 6.0, and a 5.8. That's incredible. That's amazing. That's fantastic, frankly. Unheard of. At the same time, we went from seven brackets to five brackets to four brackets to one bracket, to one bracket. Flat tax. That's been a dream of a lot of folks for a long time. And we do that in a way that every taxpayer is better off as they pay their income taxes, the way it's structured. From the, you call it the "port of the rich", everyone's better off. And frankly, those in the lower brackets are way better off because we've moved the point where taxes kick in at $2,500 for a single filer and $5,000 for a joint filer. And so, that allows this to be a substantial tax break for the poor. This bill also earmarks and allocates funding to a couple of funds. It transfers $330 million to the Public School Income Fund, a fund that...